...... Hello, entertain the motion. Mr. Pachekki and Mr. Robinson to attend remotely.
Hello.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed for you.
Welcome. Anyone sad to speak?
No, not this evening.
First up on our agenda, Ashana Davis, please step forward for your oath of office.
... Hi, this is Ashana Davis. There's a party consultation in the United States. In the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
In the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That will faithfully discharge. The duties of the police officer.
The duties of the police officer.
Of the Village of Hampshire, Illinois.
Of the Village of Hampshire, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I want to be taking care of your emotions.
Thank you so much.
And Chief, go ahead and do something as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief.
Can you get a picture with the family?
Yeah.
Take a picture. A lot of fun. She's dead up front. I wish your family would... Are you guys sure all the trustees in there too come up? No, 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 they're not going to ruin their family for us.
She just did this like two days ago.
All right, everybody smile with your eyes. There we go. There we go. Can we take one of your own with all of these guys? Everybody up. Sorry, one more, one more.
Oh, the family?
Yeah.
Lady Neil.
Or maybe just the kids. Yeah, just the kids. You said that.
Who do you think?
Josh. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What are the listeners with you guys?
My better half, my sister, my brother, my two nephews, and my wife.
All right. Nice.
Thank you so much.
As exciting as it's going to be, I think we'll believe.
That's your chance to talk.
I need your stuff here.
Here we go. We're done.
He's the fun one. He's your trustee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
You too.
All right, you should have the eighty minutes from December twenty... December seventh, twenty twenty. Please review those for any changes in the meeting. If there are no changes on our table, motion approved by the United States President.
Some of...
Special Counsel, roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Pachekki?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right. This is a regular hearing and open the public hearing. Re-earner proposed property tax bill with the village of Hampshire. Ms. Lori Lyons.
I'm going to remove my mask, is that okay? I think I'd be a little clearer for the people. All right. So Josh is going to turn pages for me tonight. And is sharing his screen with the group that is online. So the purpose of the public hearing is to discuss the proposed levy. Which our expectation is that will be adopted later this evening. So the property tax levy is an annual adoption and you do that by ordinance. The ordinance will be filed with the county clerk, assuming the adoption happens this evening, tomorrow. And the treasurer will collect the taxes from the property owners next summer. And they'll be distributed to the village between generally between the months of May and October. Sometimes it spills over into now Pennebaber like it did this year. The funds identified in the levy are utilized for... Along with our other revenue sources that make up the budget and are used in the general fund. There are a few key terms that I'd like to remind you about. The levy is the amount of money requested for property taxes. And the extension is the actual amount that will be received. The extension is the dollar amount after the PTAL has been applied to the levy requested amount. The CPI index is an indicator of inflation and PTAL says that we can increase our levy each year by either the lesser of five percent or the CPI index. And then the term EAV, you'll hear me use occasionally during this discussion. That refers to the assessed value of the taxable real estate here in the village. On the next page, it's just a reminder that the final levy amount and the related tax rate will be determined by the Kane County Clerk's Office. So we will turn our information in tomorrow. And then by February, we will start to receive information. Either February or early March on what actually has been exchanged in the village. And again, PTAL limits the amount of taxes that can be increased each year for a non-home ruled community. The next slide speaks about the minimum of twenty days is required between our authorizing resolution or the setting of the levy and the actual adoption of the levy. And then if the levy request is greater than five percent, we do have to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing here this evening. I wanted to remind you where your taxes go. For every dollar in taxes that you receive from the village... Or excuse me, pay to the county clerk or the treasurer with your tax bill, approximately six cents comes here to the village. The school district gets about sixty-five percent, the fire protection district nine cents. LG Community College, six cents. Kane County itself, four cents. Township about four cents between itself and the highway department. Two cents to the park district. Two cents to the library district and two cents to the other districts. I have park district written down twice on my list, so I apologize. There's two cents missing there. All right. The next slide is meant to just illustrate that we do rely pretty heavily on property taxes. It makes up about twenty-six percent of our general fund budgeted revenues. So that's the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, which will end in April. The levy calculation is made up of different components. The consumer price index that we talked about, the multiplier, our EAV, our estimated assessed valuation, and then the prior year extension as well as new construction that's added in the village. So each year in January, the Illinois Department of Avenue provides us with the prior year consumer price index that can be used for the current year. So in January, we already knew what we'd be able to increase our levy for automatically, if you will. Because that number is less than five percent. This would be the max if we had no new construction in the village. The next page just kind of shows the historic amounts. And you'll note that for calendar year two thousand nineteen, it was two point three percent, which is the largest amount that we've had since two thousand and sixteen. So that's good. On the next page, I talked about the multiplier. So in September of just this prior September, we've received the multiplier announcement. So this is a tentative multiplier. In my tenure here, we've never had an adjustment to this. So the multiplier won't be finalized until a later date. But I feel really very confident that one will be the multiplier for the village. So in September of each year, the county gives us a preliminary estimated EAV report. And this is important for... This is the... Gives us a snapshot of the values of the property within the village. So in September, our rate setting EAV was just over two million three hundred... No, two hundred and thirty-four million dollars. And then you'll note it's not circled, but over on the side, the new construction value was eight point seven million. So our prior year EAV was two million one forty-seven in the month of September. So this was an increase of fourteen point eight million dollars over the prior year. So the next slide shows if we just had two factors in our calculation for this current year levy request. It would be the prior year extension, which was one million fifty-six thousand and change, times the lesser of five percent or two point three percent, which is the CPI index. So the lesser is obviously the two point three percent. The most we would have gained had there been no new construction in the village would have been twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Next slide. So we talked about new construction. So in addition to that twenty-four thousand dollars that we could generate from the CIP increase, we also get to factor in the new construction in the village. So initially, the number that we talked about just a couple of seconds ago. Let's see, eight point seven million dollars in total new construction would have led us to approximately forty-one thousand dollars in additional tax that could be generated off of that new construction. Knowing however, that the village had done several temporary occupancy permits really late in the cycle, I requested an additional estimated EAV report. And while the rate setting EAV didn't change, the new construction did increase. So our levy is based on now ten million dollars in new construction versus the eight point seven million dollars that we were originally told in September. So some of the things that were added would have been new homes because the residential number went up. And then also the industrial number went up. And so that's related to Pet A and some of those other projects that came on later in the year. So the addition of to go from ten point... Nearly ten point four million up from eight point seven million is going to add an additional eight thousand four hundred dollars into the amount that we can get from new construction. So the next slide shows the levy request being eight point six five percent over the last year's extension. So we'll be asking for one million one forty-seven three seventy. But when we put it into the formulas with our current EAV as well as the new construction, I expect we'll get about a million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that leaves some wiggle room in case additional new construction comes online that we don't know about as of our resolution when we set the levy. The next slide is kind of a consolidation, if you will, of the information that was provided, actually the very detailed information that was provided in the levy ordinance. And it shows where we will be utilizing some of these monies received from the levy. So it's broken up into the information detailed at the bottom. General corporate levy, IMRF, police protection, audits, liability insurance, and social security levy. So that's down at the bottom of that information. And each of those up above show where we will be utilizing those funds. So the first column shows total budget. Those are the budgeted numbers for the various pieces where we're going to use levy. And then the third column shows the levy piece. And then which levy line item will be utilized for each of those. The next slide. This just shows what our levy request was from last year, what the actual certified extension was and the rates, as well as what we're asking for this time and the dollar change yielding in the eight point six five percent. You'll notice that we reduced social security and the liability insurance. It's... I won't say it's like completely arbitrary, but certainly we needed more dollars in corporate tax that we can spread out anywhere the village chooses. And as you realize, just a couple of meetings ago, we requested that the use of motor field tax funds for street department salaries. So we won't be spending as much social security tax the village wants during this fiscal fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Because those amounts will be paid by motor field tax dollars. The next slide just kind of illustrates what happens to a person with a two hundred and fifty-five... Or excuse me, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and what the increase in eight point six five percent actually does to their property tax bill. And because there's additional EAV and new construction, we actually expect our tax rate to go down. And so it will result in a slight decrease in the property tax bill. That makes the assumption that the estimated cash value will not change. And that this does not include anything that if you have like either a special service area for either pond maintenance or infrastructure improvements like they have in Tuscan Woods. All right. The next slide is just a reminder that here's the six cents that the village will get on the dollar. And then my next slide. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks, Josh. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you. Anything else for the public hearing that we need to talk about? Mr. Truster made a legal publication, I think.
Notice was published. The clerk should have a certificate of publication, is that right?
Thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone, any members of the public there? I don't see a sign and sheet, so...
No, there's nobody here.
All right.
An empty room. But the trustees are blurted friends. Then I will open the regular special board meeting back up. Ms. Lyons, do you want to tell us and talk about the ordinance? That leave you to justify what we do talk about?
Yes, exactly. So this just spells out the fact that we are requesting one million one forty-seven three hundred and seventy dollars. And as I mentioned in my presentation, it has the very detailed information with the entire general fund budget spelled out there.
Any questions or comments? If not, then I will entertain the motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty. The annual tax levy ordinance of the Village of Hampshire, Kane County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I still move.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Pachekki?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Mr. President, that ordinance needs to be filed with the county clerk tomorrow morning or sometime tomorrow during business hours.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Get after it early because he's going to get in the afternoon. All right, SSAA level.
All right. So what we tried to do this year is kind of spell out a plan for each of the SSAs. It's a bit of a work in progress. As we will discuss what maintenance will be done in the SSAs as we approach budget time. So just to take them right off the top, right? SSA number two, Old Mill Manor. This particular SSA, we are proposing a levy of two thousand six hundred dollars, which is down from prior years. We did... I suppose if you... Wow, that's really tiny, isn't it? Sorry. This particular SSA just has regular routine maintenance. There's no proposing for any burning or major maintenance work. We did have some machine rental last year or this current fiscal year. And that was due to the fact that I believe the wet spring made it difficult to get our equipment into mow. And so we had a tractor type of system that went in and mowed in that particular area. So, any questions? Yes, sir.
The two thousand nineteen levy was fifty-two hundred?
Yes.
The proposed levy is half.
That's correct. So what we do is we take a look at each year and what has been spent and you know what our plans are for the future. So in this particular SSA, we started out last year with a negative fund balance. And so we did levy. Made a pretty significant increase to bring that up to a positive fund balance. So we just watch that every year, just like the village needs to start with a fund balance. You know, to kind of finance the ongoing operations of the SSA. We do the same thing for each of these.
SSAA two does not have a pond, correct?
It has a mowable detention area.
Right.
Yes. Correct.
The five acres at the end of Elk Street?
Yes.
Or Old Mill and Albea.
All right. Do you want me to run through these quick and then you want to do the... Each one?
No, you run through all of them.
All right, on to SSA number three. This is the Panama Street SSA. It's at the corner of Panama and Centennial, I believe. Again, a mowable area. I'm not sure how many single-family homes are actually involved in this, but for sure, the apartment buildings that are across the street are included in that SSA. So this particular one again is taking a decrease. We had a positive fund balance last year. We looked at, you know, where we're going. It's a mowable area, no pond. And so therefore, I am suggesting a fifty percent decrease in SSA levy of three hundred dollars. Any questions? All right. The next one is SSAA number six, Hampshire Prairie. So this particular one, I had in my notes from last year that we had a creekway issue. And so that's why the levy was twelve thousand five hundred dollars last year. That creekway issue has been resolved downstream. And so therefore, we're reducing the levy, kind of getting it back in line with where it was in prior years. We may be able to take a further decrease on this. There's no pond there, but there is, what do I want to say? Creekway mowing by the elementary school. And so this is again taking a decrease of about fifty percent. Question? SSA number seven is Hampshire Hills. This is going to be our next white oak ponds, I'm afraid. This particular SSA has not seen any maintenance in my tenure at all. So there is a large pond-esque area.
South side?
Yep, on the south side of the subdivision. The majority of the subdivision drains that way. There is another area up in the, what would that be, northwest kind of corner up there as well. So we're proposing a five percent increase this year, which is the maximum we can do without having, you know, like a public hearing for this purpose as well. So we did not hold a public hearing, so we're increasing by five percent. One of the things that we need to determine is whether or not we want to go forward with the plan that is stated on this form. Or if we want to do like we did in the Hampshire Highlands, which is know that this area needs some work and maybe, you know, increase incrementally over the next few years and then start a plan at a future date. So we will be working on that. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up also is I've had several discussions with Dave, Dave Garrett, on the maintenance of these ponds. And we're really committed to keeping up with the maintenance once a plan and program is in place. But he's also looking into the fact that right now, other than the mowing piece, everything is hired out. So we hire out the machine clearing, which we probably would do anyway. We definitely would hire out the burning of the ponds because that requires permitting and special licensing, et cetera. But it's possible that our street department and SSAA workers would be able to apply herbicides both to the grasslands, reed type of plants, things, and as well as the cantails. So we're looking into that and we will have a plan again when we do our budget.
All right, if I could just interject briefly. Particularly just because these numbers reflect the proposals from the GNT that we received a few weeks ago. What we've done here is if we've spread it out over, in this case, over six years, so that the clearing would only happen to have to happen once. So we've amortized it over four years. And then every other year, we'd spray and every other year burn. So this is a recommended program. The only thing that we're asking you to go ahead tonight is the five percent increase for all of the SSAs. What you will see with the pond SSAs that have maintenance issues is that we're trying to catch up after twenty, thirty years of neglect. But we'll be bringing this to the Public Works Committee early in the calendar year, January or late January, early February, for a specific plan. So this, everything after twenty-one is just some guidance in the future. Nothing you're voting on tonight, we'll let you have that. Thanks, George. And you'll see that on the ponds coming up as well.
Okay, Hampshire Fields is the next one. SSA number eight. This one did start with a negative fund balance and we did increase the levy last year up to six thousand. The levy request was six thousand five hundred dollars. The collections are the actual sixty-four ninety-eight and change that is reflected on here. This area had some islands that have received some maintenance. Bushes removed, grass installed to make the maintenance much easier. And so therefore, we're able to reduce the levy here. Bushes removed, grass installed to make the maintenance much easier. Um and so therefore, we're able to reduce the levy here down to fifty-one hundred dollars. We will end, our expectation is to end fiscal year twenty-two um with a positive fund balance there. Um questions about Hampshire Field? White Oak Pond is the next one. So um as you know, we've been uh, this has been um kind of an ongoing piece. We now have our our plan in place for um this particular detention uh area, uh including ponds. So um you'll notice, just as Jay described, um in the clearing area, we do intend to clear in fiscal year twenty-two and amortize that expense over four years. Um the burning will be done every other year. So each year that has a black box on this one is the year that it's actually going to happen or proposed to actually happen, um even though the um like the yellow burn is is um being reflected over two years. So um spraying is uh ideal to happen twice a year, every year. Clearing, once it's done and done properly, it should maintain itself without having to be cleared again unless something bad happens, as long as burning happens at least every other year. Any questions about White Oak Ponds? This one is just being increased by five percent. The next one is Hampshire Highlands. So I kind of used Hampshire Highlands as a as a um example earlier in that um we kind of pre-planned for the major work that had to be done there. The chief will attest to the fact that um we had increased his levy a few years ago, and nothing was happening, which is true. Um but things have happened um recently, so right now we're on a spraying and burning plan. Um so we propose that the uh levy be reduced from eighteen thousand two hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars this particular year, a decrease of eighteen percent. Any questions? Hampshire Meadows is the next one. Um this one started with a negative fund balance, and so therefore uh we brought that to a positive. Um we anticipate uh just mowing in this particular um SSA area, and so therefore we propose to reduce the levy by sixty-two percent down to four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Questions there? SSA number fifteen is Lakewood Crossing, but this is a very unique one. This is truly what they call a backup SSA. Um the with other than this particular one, all of ones I talked about previously, the village actually owns the land. Um in this particular circumstance of the Lakewood Crossing, the homeowners association owns the land, and it's their responsibility to take care of the ponds. Um they too have neglected their own ponds, and therefore um the village actually has done some emergency work there. We've removed beaver dams, we um shored up overflow wears, there was um washing out of something or others. I saw all sorts of very bad pictures where, you know, they had to basically um restore the infrastructure so that um the ponds would not flood the subdivision. Um so a lot of work has been done, um but a ton of work needs to be done. So, yep, Jack can speak to that a little bit.
So the quote from McGinty for this for this particular area, there's nine ponds up there, is over a hundred thousand dollars to catch up. They've been neglected forever. Um so uh with Attorney Schuster's advice, we're going to send the homeowners association a letter of warning them, giving them an opportunity to do the work themselves, as well as sharing a quote with them so that they could use McGinty to do the same or find another provider. However, if they don't, then we will use our emergency backup um SSA authority to do the maintenance ourselves, and that will begin next year. So they will, and we, it's important, I think, to to make the point that these ponds don't just work internally, they also are part of a larger network of uh stormwater management throughout the village. So if one pond network doesn't work downstream, other pond networks won't work. So the village, we just can't let Lakewood just ignore their ponds and let them go away. Some ponds are not even draining as they shouldn't, and the other ponds now. Um so rather than just wait for beaver dams and other reasons to have emergencies, this these ponds need to be caught up. So this will probably be a a very large assessment next year unless they take it upon themselves to do the maintenance.
Have they collected any revenue?
For that purpose? Not that I'm aware of. They they do have a homeowners, uh excuse me, they do have a actually an outside service, a a um management company. So there is somebody that we can talk to. Um my my experience so far with the other homeowner associations, this is not the kind of work they like to do. They don't want to take it on. So my guess is it'll probably come back to us in the end.
Whose legal obligation is it to maintain the primary?
The homeowners association.
Okay, and so before we go to levy more in the future from them, isn't it is a route us finding legal action that force them to do the work or to have them cover the cost of doing the work? And then we just contract it and we build them directly rather than the homeowner? Because if they're legally responsible and the homeowners are already paying a homeowners association, why do we penalize the homeowner?
I can't really answer the question because I don't, exactly, because I don't know what their charges are earmarked for or what the fund balances they may have available for this type of work. Uh my assumption is that they would have to raise substantially their homeowners association fees to cover something this large. Um but that's that's something, I you know, I guess the possibility of suing them as opposed to an SSA, I would guess that the cost of the village would probably be higher uh to go through a lawsuit like that. The purpose of the letter is to inform them of our authority to do so and to try to persuade them to do the work themselves. So that would be our first objective. Uh but before we, if you would prefer, we can come back to the board again.
I want to ask you, what's the incentive of a homeowners association to give a crap whether or not an SSA and SSA gets increased to the residence if there's no detrimental effect to them and they're outside managing? But but you don't know if their homeowners association has collected any fees for this. But isn't that a loss then? If this is a backup SSA, shouldn't we have? How do we create a backup SSA without knowing whether or not a homeowners association takes it on at the primary?
So I know for a fact that the residents up there are charged for uh instances on like this uh public property. There was some vandalism and stuff that took place not too long ago when they were complaining because letters were sent out to them threatening that they were going to start raising the rates of the homeowners association, and it was a turned it, I think Linda was involved at the time. This was maybe last year, maybe summertime or so when people were complaining, and they called the village because we're not taking care of the property, and then they were all made aware that they're supposed to be taking care of the property, and so it was it was it was a pretty big deal up there over the summer because there was some vandalism and trees that got ruined and that kind of thing. This falls in that same vein. But I I'm I'm with you to the fact that, you know, we're just going to start raising the SSA because we can. Yeah, the management company is going to give us a little finger and say, see ya.
That's not our option. Management company, and there's no detriment to me. What the hell do I care whether you raise an SSA, even though I'm legally supposed to be primary?
Well.
Because you're not charged to me, you're charged to the homeowners.
Right, but I would suggest that the reason for the backup SSA is to avoid the the village having to sue someone, an association like this or the homeowners. This gives us an avenue to do it without going to court, gives us the authority to do it. It also keeps the cost to the homeowners uh while it's it's their it's their responsibility. Let's remember that homeowners run the, these are elected to hire the management company and run the management company. So it's not like the management company is.
Is Lakewood having a self-run homeowners association yet?
Yes.
Yes.
They have a management company.
They have a management company for those there.
Right, okay. How many houses do you think are up there in Lakewood? In our portion, not helping, but our portion. Ours is a whole thing.
Ours is a whole thing.
The only difference is.
School, fire protection, library, yeah.
Three hundred and fifty?
I wonder if we should send these people a letter letting them know that for years, your homeowners association who's supposed to be collecting monies to do the maintenance uh hasn't or isn't doing the maintenance, and therefore if they don't do the maintenance, we're going to do it and and bill them.
Oh, because of the climate in the subdivision in general, I think that'd be a good idea.
Hell, yeah. Heck, yeah.
For the village to get in front of it, because if it comes to the homeowners association, what end is the bad guy getting?
Because what what I'm hearing is that the backup SSA is good for us. You don't have to go to court.
Right.
The homeowners association, it's good for them. They really don't have to do the work, and then we're just going to tell the residents. The people that get screwed through the whole thing are the ones that are paying a homeowners association and have to pay an SSA. Unless the residents, unless the unless the residents of Lakewood make up the homeowners association board.
Well, they do, but they but they still they they still contract out a company to run the day-to-day. It's it's kind of like us hiring a village administrator, right? It's it's the same deal except it's a company.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding it.
No, you're.
No, because Christine said I wasn't accurate.
I I believe that should we utilize the backup SSA and do the work because they are not, we are then entitled to whatever monies they have collected thus far. It's not like we're going to go to the homeowner and say, okay, each of you owe a thousand dollars for the work that we just did. They're collecting money, so.
This that's what this is saying, is that we're going to go to the homeowners and increase from thirty-two dollars to a hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Because we know there's not enough.
My guess is they're collecting enough to do general lawn cutting and from the homeowners association? tree and bush trim.
No.
Right, this doesn't assume we take any?
I understand that, but this is just a backup that gets monitored every year. So in the event that they do have money, then next year or whenever the work is done and they pay for it themselves, I'm assuming that they'll be have done a positive balance and we'll lower it again.
Well, but I'm I'm also curious, though, to that point. FY twenty-one, we started with a negative balance of fifty-four hundred, so this isn't the first time we paid to have things done up there.
Last year, sorry to interrupt, but last year we did have a round of large increase because we did some emergence, real emergency. We had to declare beaver dam and some several, at least three other incidents that I can recall.
For FY twenty?
Yes.
Yes, big, big stuff, like they had to bring a back. FY twenty-one is next year, yes.
FY twenty-one is this year, yes.
The expenses I'm referring to are in twenty twenty and the and the FY twenty twenty years, so they're past now.
Okay.
So but what I I would make the point that I believe the impact on the homeowner will be similar either way, depending on who shops for the best value. They'll either have to increase their homeowners association unless they have a hundred thousand dollar fund balance to pay for that. What you're, I think what you're suggesting is maybe the management company has misspent their funds.
But either either their funds are in an account that they've been paying for.
They are.
Or they need to cover this.
Or they're inadequate to cover these costs, which is why they're not doing the maintenance, which is would be my speculation.
Which is fine, but I think we should, as a village board, should be sending the people of Lakewood a letter stating that fact ahead of time so that when they get an increase, they're not running off saying, you know, you guys don't do anything for us, but just raise our taxes. So I think it's a discussion for another time, but to that, to that point, I wonder what legal standing we also have as a board.
We have Mr. Schuster for here. Mr. Schuster, are you listening?
Sorry, I had to unmute.
Yeah.
I'm I'm listening. Uh I did, I didn't hear what Mr. Kelly just said, something about legal standing.
Um what legal standing do we have or do we have any to require homeowners associations within the village limits to do an annual fiscal report to the village? To show that
They don't have any.
Available for their contractually obligated maintenance.
You you don't have any legal standing. You could ask them to do that, but you don't have standing to force them to do that. Homeowners Association is governed by the property owners within the within the territory. They usually elect a board, and sometimes they hire a management company as their agent. But all the responsibility is with the homeowners all the time.
Now, that the homeowners association, though, is originally established by the developer, correct? And until a developer pulls out to a certain percentage, it is not handed over to the resident. So is that initially established?
Yeah.
Way done, though.
Tuscany still is. No, we're telling Lakewood. I I get that part. I get that. I get all that. What what I'm getting at is when we talk about Tuscany, when we talk about a new crown development, this crown development, when we talk to those and we're working with developers, is there any leeway that we work with a developer to say, any homeowners association, you're going to agree at the establishment of it that they are going to provide financial reports? We.
Because remember, there has to be some responsibility on homeowners. When you buy a house, you get a thing that says, here's the rules. Here's what you're responsible for. So they have to self-manage and self.
Right, but Aaron's asking, Aaron's asking, is future in the future, Mark, can we request a new development when they formulate a homeowners association to send us a finance, a yearly financial, so we don't get into this pickle again? Yeah, can that be in the developer?
Perhaps in an annexation agreement. Uh it would be unusual, though, for the public body to insert itself into that private entity. Uh but it's, I I I'll think about that. Uh for purposes of an annexation agreement, you might. Uh the 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 issue right away will be, what do you do the first year they don't send it? Now, you're going to sue them? You're going to expend public dollars to go to court?
Okay, so so my question is, so if we're going to spend fifty grand fixing Lakewood this year because the homeowner association either doesn't respond to us, or they haven't collected enough funds to do it, or they have collected enough funds to do it and they won't tell us, how do we recapture our money?
Taxes. That's what what you're doing right now, tonight.
There's no overhead on the tax.
Yeah, but they're making us look like the the frickin' bad guy.
Well, I guess.
We're not.
So so when the develop, when the, you know, the homeowners association was formed, I'm I'm assuming, right, because I'm just, because I wasn't around it. But I'm assuming that it was clearly communicated to the homeowners association what their responsibilities were and that kind of stuff. We can find that information, right? So when this does turn into a thing, we can say, look, this is when your homeowners association was formed. These are the things that you guys agreed to. These are the things that you are not doing, and these are the steps that we are taking to make sure that it gets done.
We we don't necessarily have that information about how homeowners association was formed. That's between the developer and the homeowners.
No, no, I I.
That's the Tuscany Woods, because they're still not handed over.
Right.
And I have homeowners call me stuck, I would say. Um it was monthly earlier in the year. It hasn't happened in a while. In fact, I had to get ahold of the former developer who's no longer in business. That's the problem. The Pescunelli is bankrupt in Illinois, and so they have a management company in Chicago that's very difficult to get ahold of. I finally had to call the former manager of Pescunelli Homes, who we're discussing other issues with now about Tuscany Woods, too. And he gave me contact, a personal cell phone number for the management company, had a conversation with her about the three people who were waiting for their approval from their architectural committee before they could apply for a fence permit in the community. So they have to do all that approval first before you can come to the village for a permit. Uh in fact, they do a a fair, the homeowners association ferret out a fair amount of of, let's say, not so desirable um improvements because the homeowners association architectural committee often doesn't approve it. But we they were having trouble just getting their architectural committee to even respond and the management company to respond on their behalf. So I did it. I did Airbnb. I spoke to the management company. I was rather threatening with really no authority and saying you have to be more responsive to your to your, in fact, I gave her a personal cell phone number out to several residents and finally got her attention. So that can be difficult. The transition from a man from a, an out-of-business, really, um developer to homeowners association can be difficult. The homeowners have since then had several meetings trying to organize themselves, but they're also a little bit disorganized. So that that's the worst-case scenario.
Right, and I understand that. I'm talking more about in this case, there had to have been a conversation between the village and the developer about what the responsibilities of their homeowner association was going to be in primaries of maintenance of the ponds in this specific example. Otherwise, we don't have a backup because we would have somehow had an assumption that they had agreed that, yes, our homeowners association will cover maintenance of the ponds. Fair? That hasn't been done.
That that's what I was asked originally. It's what what where did that come from? Like, do they know that they're supposed to do this? Is that in writing somewhere?
In the, yeah, in the covenants and the bylaws of the association.
Yeah, yeah. You know, when a when a SSA is formed, there's a public hearing, there's two ordinances that are passed. There's an application that's filed by the developer, and and these things are spelled out. Uh specifically for a backup, it specifically says you're going to maintain the stormwater management facilities, and the only purpose of this SSA is to back up with a tax levy. is to back up with a tax levy, uh, power in the event that you don't, that you fail to do it. So, uh, it is spelled out, uh, specifically in something like Lakewood.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable getting that document and sending it to these people. I have no problem raising the tax to fix the stuff because they're going to mess over it. But I want the people over there to know that we're not doing it. That they, their inability to govern themselves has forced us to do it.
That would be in the original backup SSA ordinance.
Well, we got to have it somewhere.
It's here.
Oh, sure.
It's possible.
It's recorded.
Attorney Schuster answered a different question. Your question, trustee Kelly, was, what, what's in the order? What are the bylaws that say that the management company should have maintained?
No, it, it was, he answered the right one, which was, there had to have been a conversation or some action by the village that let that developer know who was building the, or creating the homeowners association, that that was their primary, that was a, one of their primary responsibilities, right?
Yes.
Those six, ten spells that should spell out what's in there. So I, I guess the, the, the question, if I'm reading this right, is if, if the homeowners association is collecting and has been collecting fees for this pond maintenance through their normal SSA process, but they've neglected to take care of the problem, that's why we're looking to enact the backup SSA. Is there any recourse from the village uh, to force them through the regular SSA to do this work?
No, the, the property owners have the standing to do that. It, the members of the association.
Is their management company to spend the money that they have been collecting?
Once again, we don't know, we don't know where that money is. We don't know if they spent the money on a pool.
Or they even collected it, or they raised it.
My guess would be they haven't raised enough money to do this maintenance and nobody's ever pushed them. Let's not forget that the, the village has had this responsibility for fifteen, twenty years, however long it's been up there. We could have enacted this SSA or at least cautioned and warned them, if you don't do this, we will be doing maintenance soon.
Long term.
For twenty years ago, just like the other ponds. So really the only difference here is that this one is a backup instead of our own responsibility for our own property. But that, I, I'm not trying to force us on previous boards or previous administrators, but this, this should have been brought up previously and would have been a much smaller problem twenty years ago or fifteen years ago. Now we're dealing with fifteen years of neglect and we have to catch up.
So what if, what a good step be to, I don't know, and bring in the, you know, I understand sending a letter, but maybe bringing the Lakewood president of their board, so homeowners association or the management company or whatever, and they have a meeting and explain it?
Yes.
Rather than just say, hey, we're going to do this?
My, my first attempt will be to speak to the homeowners association management company and find out what their plans are, let them know what we're planning to do. Depending on what kind of response I get from them, whether they have funds available, are you going to do the maintenance? No, we don't have enough money. Then I think it's, it's appropriate to communicate directly with the homeowners board or director.
Which is, which my guess is what we're going to do because they're over there arguing who's going to empty the garbage can in the basketball court every single week.
Yeah.
And let's be complaining that our garbage collection was too early because it's waking people up at about thirty in the morning. I believe they may have received that call.
So I have no problem raising our taxes.
Didn't they have an issue with?
Not till he does his thing and we, and we, we either get a copy of the original doc for the people, for the homeowners association board and all that first.
Before COVID. Yeah.
I, I assure you all that we will make every effort to get compliance without using the SSA and we'll, we'll escalate and I'll keep you informed of the communication.
Okay. All right. Any questions further on SSA is? Are we separating out SSA, what was it, thirteen and?
Those are infrastructure SSA, so yes.
That'll be a different motion.
Yes. Yep.
There's a series of ordinances read off one by one. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-one, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty in twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number two.
Some of them.
Again.
Any, Rob?
Yeah, I was Robinson.
Uh, and question or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Motion passed five one.
Do I pick? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-two. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May tw- May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number three.
Some of them.
Thank you. Question or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
To pass five one.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-three and ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning eight, May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number six.
Go move.
Second.
Question or comments?
I'll be at the standing.
Yeah, I was going to ask which neighborhood is this? This is up for review. Back in there.
I'm preparing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the neighborhoods are under your chair.
First and second. Question or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed four two.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-four. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number seven. So move.
Second.
Question or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
All right. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-five. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number eight.
Some of them.
Second. Question or comment? E-Rob?
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Uh, no.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed five one.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-six. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number ten.
Some of them.
Second. Question or comment?
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
No.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Kelly.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
No.
We live there.
Mr. Magnusson.
Aye.
Motion passed three.
Excuse me, what, what was that final vote?
It was four, three with the brother's president voting.
Oh, thank you. I, I, that's the part I missed. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-seven, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number eleven. Go move.
Second.
Question or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Motion passed five one.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-eight. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village of Hampshire special service area number twelve.
I'll see.
Go move.
Second.
Got a lot there.
Who first?
Toby.
Any question or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed five one.
Finally, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-nine. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-one, in and for the village, village of Hampshire special service area number fifteen.
Some of them.
Second.
Any question or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Kelly.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Gajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Motion passed five one.
Mr. President, I just asked the clerk on the, on the previous roll call, I believe it was five zero rather than five one. I think it was five positive and one abstaining. I think that Mr. Schuster was trying to make that difference.
Uh, uh, an abstention. It, if you announced that the, the abstention vote was, what, four to one? An abstention's not a negative vote, so it was four to zero with one abstention.
Five, zero with one abstention.
And if you have done the same on, uh, number six, if I heard the vote right, there were four positive, one no, and one abstention. So it was a four to one vote.
Yeah, did you understand? Yeah, so that's a, you said five one. Four, one.
Yep, I'm cut out.
Four, one.
Four, nine.
All right. Administrative reports, sir.
All right, I'm back.
We missed you.
Yeah. All right. Administrative reports?
Um. Do you want me to go with that?
Anything over the special services, thirteen to fourteen?
So, um, as a supplement sent out earlier today, you see the administrative reports called SSA number thirteen and fourteen. The first one that we're going to discuss is a resolution, um, approving the administrative report for calendar year twenty twenty for SSA number thirteen, which is the infrastructure SSA or SBA, as the county calls it, special benefit area, um, in Tuscany Woods. So essentially the village, um, hires an administrator that determines what administrative fees need to be paid in addition to the bond payments that are required for the upcoming calendar year. Um, that being said, um, the, the special, uh, service area administrative report includes, um, the fees for a townhome, a duplex and a single family home. And therefore we're asking that you approve this report, including a special rule, which is part of that report. Any questions?
How long?
Yeah, um, the last year of levy will be twenty thirty-five. The last year, uh, taxes will be collected is the summer of twenty thirty-six.
All right. Any questions or comments?
This bond was refunded and therefore, um, we're not at the maximum tax. So, um, we, during the refunding process, it lowered the interest rate on the bond, which did not extend the time period out, um, but did lower the fees to the residents, so.
And you have one question. I don't know if it's part of this or not.
Sure.
The two ponds are in Tuscany two. But Tuscany one is the exclusive user of those ponds.
At the present time, that's accurate.
Correct. So is Tuscany one going to ever do maintenance on the ponds they exclusively are using now? Even though they're part of Tuscany two?
So, um, should the ponds in Tuscany two require maintenance? This, uh, that is the responsibility of the landowner at the present time.
So a landowner could theoretically shut those ponds off and then Tuscany one has no place to put their water. You understand that, right?
I understand what you're saying. That's the first time it's ever been brought up that.
It, it's troublesome in the sense that, um, uh, unit two has no, um, current plans for development, so it, it's a problem.
So if we go to the, to the owner of Tuscany two and say, by the way, there's fifteen for that pond, eighteen for that pond to do the maintenance, he can shut off, he can shut off the storm sewer and Tuscany one's going to be flooded. You, okay?
No, I don't, I can't, um, I'd have to untangle that for you a little better by looking at the agreements. But that was covered upfront. There are easements in place, uh, and water from Tuscany one can go into ponds on Tuscany two.
Right. Who's going to pay for the maintenance on the ponds on Tuscany two? If Tuscany two isn't built and the owner of Tuscany two ponds doesn't want to do the maintenance, who do we build?
Well, I, I believe that that's covered in the original documents. I, I know it all came up and was discussed. I, I, you're catching me a little off guard to recite to you from sixteen years ago, but, but, uh, it, it should be covered.
Trustee Coe, I'll get that, dude.
We might need that.
I'll get it. I, I just want to also make sure you're all aware, this is an infrastructure SSA, so this is very different than the backup maintenance SSAs. This was for all the curbs and gutters and all of the utilities that were put in. It's something that we don't, that the county no longer allows. You're going to see that also in Lakewood. This is kind of a, a method that builders used to use to sort of hide the cost of the infrastructure when they were selling a home. Uh, the cost would come back to them instead on the taxes. So it's something that was actually requested, um, by Tuscany Woods two just recently in some of our discussions. And, uh, we told them flat out, no, and the county no longer permits it. At least the county, we no longer administer the tax for us. We would have to collect the taxes now. So the answer is we won't do it again.
Any, any really questions or comments? Yeah, I do have a question. So we took out, according to the documents that I read through for this one, we took out a twelve million dollar bond. Pretty much, there's like five million left. When I look at table five and the documentation of the SSA, SSA number thirteen funded with nine point two million. So we took out over three million dollars more in a bond than with the actual SSA portion of that improvement that was supposed to be. Do we have any reason why now that this SSA is covering the cost of that debt service, why our debt service was three million more than what the SSA funded amount was?
Um, that predates me, so I can't really answer other than I know that, um, anytime you fund a bond, you have to have bond counsel, uh, financial advisors and all that type of stuff. So in addition to the infrastructure, there would have been certain closing costs, I'll call it, um, put in here as well as, um, oftentimes the bonds require insurance, um, that would cover the bond if the payments were not made, so that, that may be in there as well. Um, I could certainly go back to the originating documents and get in detail with respect to that.
And we can't go back and cancel that bond? I'm just wondering, it seems like we're collecting more than it ever costs.
So I will tell you that, um.
Well, we also borrowed more than that.
This, this was a failed subvention, right? Um, when Pescunelli went out of business and therefore when Ryland Homes came in, we were able to refund this bond, thank goodness, because we never would, so many bond payments were not made. And, um, the bondholders were, um, not receiving their normal bond payments.
We didn't pay the payment?
The homeowners didn't, the homeowners or the, the property owners did not. The homeowners didn't, the homeowners or the, the property owners did not pay the bond payments, because it comes through on the property tax bills. So the combination of bringing Ryland in to finish the subdivision, as well as being able to refund this, allows us to pay the debt service in full. So I'm not sure what would have happened.
Are you the only responsible for the debt service, this development?
No, this is, this is non-commitment debt, so essentially, when something like this was done back in the day, the village kind of loaned its tax exemption to the developer that was able to issue tax-exempt bonds, which is obviously favorable for the bondholders, but no, this is non-commitment debt to the village.
But it would have, if this were to go under, it affects our credit rate.
I don't, I don't think so, yeah.
But to your original question, we could go back and do the research on what the bond, the bond sale was for that amount. It's, it'll take a little research.
I'm gonna.
Technically, we may not have issued that many bonds too, I mean, the authorizing ordinance always has more, and then the actual bonds issued reflect all the, the actual infrastructure and the closing costs.
More relevant to this current year, in there it also stated that we had delinquency tax payments at an interest rate of 3.6, why were we delinquent in taxes, or why was there delinquency?
So there, there are a couple of property owners that have not paid their real estate taxes this year, and so that's what that's speaking to, I believe.
So then that cost is averaged out, all the property, it could get added in as an expense, right?
Um.
That has to be covered.
So, there's a couple of things to keep in mind, there is a reserve fund, so when the bonds were refunded, there was money put into a reserve fund that can cover those bond, or those real estate payments that are not made. Eventually, the real estate, the property is sold for taxes, I'm sure you've heard that, that type of thing, and then the money is recovered. So it, it's just a timing issue with respect to that, we've not had any properties, other than one that I know of, failed to sell here. And that is actually a detention bond, was tried to be sold.
A what?
A detention bond.
Yeah. That's your thing. Hey.
There's no buyers on that one, no pictures on it.
Further questions? All right, the nine want to take a motion to approve Resolution 20-18, a resolution approving the 2020 administration report for the Village of Hampshire Special Service Area Number 13, including the amended special tax rule for calendar year 2020 for taxes to be allowed to be collected in 2021.
Move.
Questions in the comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Kretjek.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right, to SSA Number 14, very similar situation, this is the infrastructure in Lakewood subdivision. It includes, like Mr. Hedges said, roads, streetlights, sanitary sewer, water lines, and also stormwater lines within the village of, within Lakewood subdivision.
Any questions on Tusk, Number 14, Lakewood Crossing? They couldn't come up with a more current poll? What, more, more current poll? Oh, that's not one. I will, I want to take a motion to approve Resolution 20-19, a resolution approving the 2020 administration report for the Village of Hampshire Special Service Area Number 14, including the amended special tax rule for calendar year 2020 for taxes collected in 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions in the comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kretjek.
Aye.
Mr. Reed. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Me again, all right.
Abating it.
So, because the bonds were refunded, and the fact that the SSA is performing well, people are making their payments with a couple of delinquency exceptions, we are abating the taxes above and beyond the maximum tax that could be levied against the individual types of property. In the case of SSA 13, it's townhomes, duplexes, and, say again.
Very good. Any questions in the comments? All right, and I want to take a motion to approve ordinance 20-40. Did somebody have a question? An ordinance abating special taxes levied for the 2020 tax year collectible in 2021 to pay debt service on the special service area bonds issued for special service area Number 13, the Village of Hampshire, Kent County, Illinois. So.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kretjek.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right, Lakewood Crossing.
Similar situation, and one thing that I probably should have said is, we, we fall back to the original authorizing ordinance that stated what the maximum tax would be for each property, it does increase each year by a maximum of 3%, and we do not need to collect 100% of those taxes in the case of Lakewood, which includes only duplexes and.
Any questions or comments? All right, and I want to take a motion to approve ordinance 20-41, an ordinance abating special taxes levied for the 2020 tax year collectible in 2021 to pay debt service on the special service area, special service area bonds issued for special service area Number 14 in the Village of Hampshire, Kent County, Illinois.
Making motion.
Second.
Questions in the comments? On the last ordinance of 2020, roll call please.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Kretjek.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right.
Why are you in here, Jay? Just taking up space tonight.
All right, municipal compliance report, this is kind of a check mark the box, if you will, a requirement of the state of Illinois. The police pension fund hires every year an actuary that computes what is necessary to fund the village's contribution for police pension fund for next fiscal year, and the requirement is that this be turned in prior to turning in the levy. We talked a little bit about levying for police pension fund in the past, and one of the things I want to point out is, we saw that we levy for audit, liability, insurance, social security, general corporate amount, and police protection. We could add police pension fund in there without a levy, it would simply reallocate all the dollars that we are able to obtain, so taking away like, let's say, from the general fund levy or from police protection and moving it down to a pension item, without a referendum for that purpose, we'd not be able to add to our tax receipts. So that being said, this report simply lays out what the, the police pension is requesting of the village for fiscal year 22. The important things to note here is they're requesting $647,752, that's $295,000 more than the prior year, and that is the result of Public Act 101-0627, which made nine of our police officers both active and retired, we have three current retirees, two deferred, and one receiving pension dollars, they were moved from tier two to tier one. The benefits are richer, and therefore, the cost of the village will be greater.
That was passed by the state.
That was passed by the state.
Another uncut and mending, however, what's finance director lines having that says what, what the village will operate on, so that's something that we'll be addressing you during the budget time. Does that, is not an absolute mandate, that's what the pension board is requesting.
There are actually three numbers in the report, if you, if you saw it, there is the amount that they're requesting, a 90% number, and then also, the Department of Insurance does an actuarial study as well, and their number is the most favorable, $500, nearly $27,000, so.
Do we have the right to look at the actuarial report?
Absolutely.
To see why the fund is at 34.65% down from 51?
Sure, and that is the result of the reamortization of all of our dollars, if you will, because of this tier two to tier one change.
It's due to the increased benefits.
Yep.
Yeah, that.
It does appear, though, that last year this dollar amount was $300,000, and that rose to 50% or something that we refunded last year, 53, I think. This will be very likely a $220,000, $230,000 increase at minimum, which will be that amount of money that we will not have in the general fund for other purposes. So this is going to be a big hit on our budget. And as you saw earlier, we have a forty-some thousand dollar increase in general fund revenues for property tax, so, I don't know what happens with other funds, we could well be, this could be a $200,000 hit on our budget.
So I guess my question then would be, should they be coming making a report to us to make sure that they're invested the way they should be invested?
So the interesting thing about the fund that was just created in 2012, after the village hit the census mark of 5,000, it was required to establish a fund, is the fact that, well, there's a couple of things. First of all, we were kind of in limo, right? So initially, all of our tier one IMRF participants then became tier two pension participants, is that really fair? They've been our police officers for as long as somebody that has been a police officer at another place that was tier one. So this kind of made that right. The thing that was wrong was the fact that, again, put it, put us in limo. So we contributed both to the pension fund and to IMRF, it took about three and a half years before IMRF realized we were kind of overfunded with them, because all of these people had now withdrawn their dollars. And the interesting part of it is, there was just a, a short window also where the, the village received only the contributions of the officers themselves, not the village's contribution to IMRF on behalf of all of those officers. They now changed that rule, so that, like, Ingrid Grove, for instance, will get the $5,000, you know, 5,000 people mark in this next census, and will have to create a police pension fund. Now, they get not only the officers' dollars, they get the village's dollars, which is kind of a, you know, a bad thing. And because our fund is less than $2 million, you only can, it's, the statute has us like in tiers, right? So if your fund is $0 to $2 million, you only can have 10% in, like, equities that can actually, you know, like, make money in the stock market. So we've had our money in, the pension funds had their money in money market and, and checking essentially, to, you know, for corporate funds.
Bizarre.
It's, well.
You're not going to make any money.
That's correct. So now, the interesting thing is, any of you should check your mailboxes, because we started to receive the IML book for this particular period, it's going to talk about these pension funds, because part of this change was also a draw for all pension funds to be consolidated. So we'll, we'll be a $2 million fund in a big pot of dollars, billions of dollars, with every other downstate police pension fund outside of Chicago. So they will be doing the investing, rather than locally investing these funds, so I feel like we'll have the opportunity to meet our investment goals now, because we will have many more dollars to pool together, to, to be very diversified and have a much more investment income than we have in the inception of this fund.
With the IMRF change, is it potentially possible to retro and have our village invest in money now?
I don't think so, no, we're, we're still in the window where they, you know, like, they set their rules, right? And it was really interesting, if you look at some of those rules, they said, with the exception of XYZ city. You know, so there's somebody that was on the sponsoring bill of that, like, sat and listened to the community say, you know, we don't want to be part of that, we want, you know, something, so, I mean, they carved people out of these things, but we're literally in a window, I'm not sure how many funds, I, I did ask the actuary, so, that, that did the actuary report for the pension fund, how many of their clients were in the same situation? And I think that they said that they had six, and I'm trying to get more information to find out, who, it ought to be public knowledge, right? I just need to figure out who to, maybe FOIA, the Department of Insurance, who monitors the police pension funds. Who are those, you know, six plus however many other cities that, that created their fund after the 2010 census that now has police officers that are, you know, being reclassified, so, you know.
I meant more of the IMRF contribution, like you said, only the employees' contribution, we don't have the village's, which put our fund underfunded.
Yes.
And we overfunded the IMRF one.
Yes, so.
And Ingrid now is in a position where they can take 100% of those contributions.
Correct.
Now that they changed the rule, can we go back to IMRF and say, we now want to move the village's contribution for those officers?
No, so it was, when they changed the rule back to include the IMRF contribution, it was as of that particular date, it wasn't retroactive to the, I think it was, oh, I guess, so, we knew when the census was certified that we had to establish the fund, you were allowed, you know, a reasonable period of time to organize your fund, it took us from the certification of the census until May of 2012. So the census was in 10, it took us until May of 2012 to actually, you know, take the first contribution. But when they redid the law, and we, you know, after we got our, just the IMRF from the officers, they didn't go back too far enough to capture our getting those IMRF dollars. So it, it was very specific on the timeframe, that from this point forward, you now can get your IMRF dollars from the village.
We've had this conversation, every single budget comes around, I do this report, and it's just like.
And, and why isn't that we can only invest in the money market and checking account?
That's, so.
And why do we need an actuary to do that?
The actuary is the one that factors in the life expectancy and the number of.
Right, they run it off the tables.
Yes, yes, they, they are not doing the investing, the investing was done here locally, with a, with a very astute investment advisor on, on board the entire time, so, his recommendation.
But that's changed, that's going downstate.
That will go downstate, yes.
Is the, would this combine part of the pension funds, so that, Trusty Coe, to your question, it's now a larger investment vehicle?
And they don't have to do money market, they're out in the market.
Yes.
But that being said, now that it's centralized, does they have access to that pension fund like they have others?
That is a big concern of the police officers, without a doubt.
They currently do.
And I don't believe so, I.
By no IMRF, they absolutely can't.
Yeah, and, and it's supposed to be exactly the same way, the, the models are after the IMRF stuff. I mean, never say never, because who knows, you know, you never know what they're going to attach to, but.
The question was, who made the decision to invest in money market and checking, whose decision was that?
The pension fund did that.
Our local pension.
Yes, and it was because the, the investment fees would have been greater than the interest on just 10% of the fund being allowed to go into equities. So. Because what they would do was that they'd manage the entire fund and charge the $2 million. Because what they would do was they'd manage the entire fund and charge the $2 million.
Well, you would hire, you would hire an investment firm and then the actuary would report to the board and the investment firm. And the investment firm and the actuary would work together. So they would have made a boatload of money, a boatload if they would have hired an investment firm. Maybe not this year.
Well, and but they were very limited. Even the investment firm could say, you know, we want 60% of your fund to be in equities and, you know, X number of percentage. But the state statute would not allow that. It was very specific.
This term has come up a lot. I don't know, I get it, but how does the pension fund work? The police pension fund work in communities that are also home, like Rockford is home?
Uh, Rockford is not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. In home rural communities, are you still bound by these type of pension laws?
Yes.
So that's not one of the things that you can determine how your money is spent?
Correct. The board can have the authority, however, to enact an additional levy for that purpose without going to referendum.
Then it sounds like somebody needs to go down to the lobby to get that changed.
Oh, I'm sure they do. They try.
Well, I know that, I know they've been talking about this consolidation of pension lines for the last, at least the last two years, at minimum the last two years. And the whole reason that it hasn't been, like they wanted to set this up right away, but then there was all kinds of opposition because of being able to borrow against it and that kind of stuff.
Correct.
And that's what's kind of the bracing, so.
There were, so I sat in on conference calls when this whole thing was going through and there were communities that are well-funded that wanted no part of this. They were doing just fine. Their investments were making the money. They were meeting their actuarial goals and they wanted no part of it, but they were pulled down too. So it's not, I think for the Village of Hampshire, I think it's actually going to be beneficial.
Oh, big time.
But for many funds, they were very hesitant and didn't want any part of it, but they got pulled back too. So they're at the point where they've established their board, but they have not determined, you know, pandemic wise, I'm not even sure if they're meeting yet, but I haven't read the entire article. I just noticed that it was in there.
So when this happens, we have a police pension board?
Correct.
When this all goes down there, does our police pension?
So they, no, they still have local authority on whether to issue disability pensions. They will acknowledge and approve retirement pensions and those types of things. So they will not have investment responsibilities, but everything else will stay here.
Any further? I will entertain a motion to accept the 2020 municipal compliance report for the police pension fund.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Coke.
Aye.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero.
Okay, anything further before we cure Mr. Matthews?
Just one quick announcement. For those of you who were not here before the board meeting started, I was just confirming in the last hour that we will have another COVID test site at Hampshire High School on January 17th, Sunday, January 17th, same arrangement as before.
Did we get a preliminary count of what they think went through there?
238 people were tested that week. They expect around 400 on the weekend, so it should be a little higher than that.
Anything further? Everybody have a happy new year? The end 2021. I want to pay a vote to your.
Happy new year.
Third? Was that a second? I want to touch down on the rolling table.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Aye, aye. Mr. Coke.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.